I am going to call the meeting of the Lake Mills City Council for December 15th, 2020 to order. It's not muted. It's not muted. Can you get, you guys can hear me, right Diane?
I can hear you.
Okay, Dan couldn't hear me for some reason. Okay, uh, let's go with the roll call vote Heather, please.
Diane Fritsch. Dan, you're muted. Dan, here. Mr. Foster.
Here.
Doug Fritsch.
Here.
Ms. Schmidt.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, for those that can, uh, rise, rise and let's do the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the five United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united again, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Suppose every time I do that, you get a shot at my backside. Sorry about that. I have to turn the, I have to turn the camera next time.
Pretty backside.
That moves us on to item four, uh, correction and or approval of the city council minutes of December 1, 2020. Do we have a motion of adoption?
So moved.
Thank you Doug. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you Diane. So they, let's call roll call vote to adopt the minutes as written.
Mr. Foster.
Aye.
Doug Fritsch.
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt.
Aye.
Diane Fritsch.
Hi.
Motion passed four zero.
Thank you. Item five correspondence and we'll start in the order of the pictures I see. So Ms. Schmidt.
I was contacted, um, by a couple of people regarding the development proposal, the rezoning this, that's on the agenda today. And I think that's the only contacts I've had.
Thank you. Uh, Doug?
Uh, same thing. They tried to get in contact with me, uh, otherwise nothing else.
All right, thank you. Uh, Diane?
Yes, uh, ditto to what's been mentioned so far and, um, I also did, um, have two contacts since the last meeting, uh, from people that are concerned and working on how to resurrect Santa Claus for the next year. So we're just talking yet and, uh, uh, Steve, when we get to the point where there's something to say, we'll give you a call and bring you in on that, okay?
All right, I know they've been talking to Paul, so.
Okay. That's all.
All right, thanks Diane. Excuse me. Uh, yeah, I had the same call about the, uh, the development down on the south side of town and also had a couple of calls from folks that are, were interested in the, uh, the process to fill our vacancy. So we have some interest in that and hopefully we'll see some, some papers come across the desk real soon here. All right, we are going to move into, uh, questions and public comment. And let me just check here, make sure we don't have something sneaking up on me. Nope, we don't. The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. Public comments may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda. If you have registered with a city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meeting law discourages actions by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when starting your comments and fill out the citation sheet provided. For those that are attending online, uh, and you, and you want to make comments, please type your name and address into the, uh, chat feature of the, the eight by eight meeting. First, let's go, is there anybody online that wants to make a comment?
Um, my name is Mike Niesman. I, uh, 113 South Ferry Drive in Lake Mills.
Go ahead, sir. Floor's yours.
I just wanted to say thank you for considering me, uh, for appointment as an alternate on the zoning board of appeals. That's why I'm, uh, attending the meeting virtually. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you for applying. Is there anyone else online that would like to make a comment? All right, hearing nothing, we'll go to the room here. Someone's coming up to the microphone.
Good evening. Uh, you can hear me okay. Uh, my name is Doug Malay. Uh, I spoke at, uh, a couple of these meetings. Um, I, I represent, I'm one of the partners in formal development who is developing the property on, at 1204. Uh, the only, the only reason for me to speak tonight, I, I think the council has seen all of the information we've supplied. Uh, again with it comes, you know, Jason Forrest, my partner in this, uh, and my reassurance that, uh, we're doing everything that the city is asking us to do, uh, as well as the state, obviously, uh, in order to do, do this right. And that's going to be our ultimate goal is to, to, obviously we're residents of the town. So we're going to make sure our signature is, uh, on this thing. One of the requests I have, I said, submitted a letter to the clerk prior to the meeting. Uh, tonight's meeting is, uh, the first reading. We are requesting that this be the final meeting, as a final reading. Um, and that this, that we have a chance to move on this tonight. Uh, we are running, uh, this has taken several, several months to develop. Uh, we have had multiple meetings with the planning committees, with the city, uh, and we're running up against the weather here on the, on this situation. The reason for my request is exactly that. We would like to still get this project in the ground, starting, uh, at the tail end of this year, um, which only gives us a couple more weeks. And, uh, the reason for that is so we can have foundations going in, in, uh, in the, in the spring. So our goal is to have, uh, to, to add to the value of the city in 2021. And if we're delayed any longer, we're going to get into, uh, weather problems. And as a result, this is going to get pushed substantially. So, uh, that is my reason for getting up and speaking, requesting that we, we, uh, make this the final reading and that we can move on it hopefully tonight. And later in the meeting, if there's any questions that anybody has for myself or for Jason, we're happy to answer. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? And questions and public comment. Seeing none, we are going to close public, uh, questions and public comment and move on to the city manager's report. Steve?
All I have tonight is, is that the general fund check register was provided and, uh, the utility check register was provided. So are there any questions? I may not be able to answer all of them, but I should be able to get some of them.
Uh, I guess the only question I have isn't pertaining to those. Did you get a chance to look at the, the poll, uh, format I put out there for the, um, for the one question for the, uh, shoot.
Logos.
Logo, there you go. I, I couldn't get that word in my head.
Yeah, I looked at it. I, I agree. I kind of had the same feeling you did that the logo pictures weren't showing up, right?
Yep.
I wasn't sure where you wanted to go with it after you had emailed me. I still have that email up. You want me to contact, um, or contact that Polco and see what she sees?
Yeah, to see if we can get them to show, I don't know, better, how we can do it, because we want it to look like the first selection is the two different, or is the one logo, but in the different formats. I, I think you understand what I'm saying.
Yeah, I get it.
We have one in portrait, yeah, one in portrait, one in landscape, but that's one selection. And then we will have to figure out, we have to add two, two questions in order to make the poll viable. And then while we're kind of getting it out, so we can get some, get some traction and hopefully get a logo selected.
All right, I will, I will contact her and get back to you.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else have any questions for Steve?
No.
I do.
Nope, go ahead.
I just, uh, wanted to mention, my understanding is that the tax bills were sent out last Friday, or Thursday?
That's correct.
Um, I did want to let you know, we did not receive ours yet. So the post office is probably bogged down with Christmas cards and you know what. But I did want to let people know that yes, they've been sent out. Uh, we need to give them a couple more days and, uh, so if, what would you say if you haven't gotten it by the end of the week, Charles, or what?
Yes, they were mailed out Friday.
Yeah, okay, that's what I was thinking too. So even.
We had, uh, I know that yesterday the, the mail lady started work at six o'clock and finished somewhere around six thirty at night. They, they were just extremely busy the last couple of days. So I, I received mine yesterday. Uh, so I'm, I'm assuming that they'll be out shortly and if by Friday they're not, you might contact us and we'll at least be, um, we can give you some information.
Right. Okay, just thought I'd mention it.
Thanks Diane. Okay. Excuse me. Moves us on to item eight. The acceptance of the minutes of the planning commission of November 24th, 2020. The joint Rock Lake Committee of October 6th, 2020. The joint Rock Lake Committee of November 4th, 2020 and the senior advisory board minutes of November 19th, 2020 will go on record as written. That moves us into council business. The first order of business is item A, board and committee appointments. So I am appointing Michael Nessman to the zoning board of appeals as an alternate. So I would entertain a motion of adoption for that.
I so move.
Thank you Vicki. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you Diane. Uh, so it's been moved and seconded and we will move on to the roll call vote to appoint Michael Nessman to the zoning board appeals as an alternate. Go ahead and call roll.
Doug Fritsch.
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt.
Aye.
Diane Fritsch.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Thank you. Item B, resolution 20 dash 49. Could I get that title read, please?
Resolution 20 dash 49, authorizing the city manager to direct the treasurer to transfer funds, municipal court clerk slash financial assistant.
Okay, I would entertain a motion of adoption for resolution 24, 20 dash 49.
So moved.
Thank you Doug. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you Vicki. Um, this, Betsy, I believe, I saw around here, I believe this is your.
Yes, it is. Yes.
Take it away.
Sure. Um, you may or may not remember back in January, um, during a meeting, there was a discussion about the change in the position for the, the court clerk. Uh, there, we needed to hire a new court clerk and, um, Steve and I had been discussing my need for additional staff and he felt that this was a, a good opportunity to add a half-time, um, position for me and create a full-time position through the combination of the, the two, the court clerk and the financial assistant. Um, uh, because it was in January that this was decided, there, there was no budget at the time. So we just waited until December now to, uh, see what our costs were and to transfer funds to cover those unbudgeted items. Of course, the, uh, the payroll, half of that payroll was already covered in the judicial because that was a budgeted portion of it. But since it was a part-time position and there were no benefits, um, there's no insurance, there's no retirement, no social security, you know, those are the things that we needed to make sure are covered for this employee now. So it, I have in the resolution, a detailed listing of the line items. So you have an idea of the costs associated with each of those that, and so I, I recommend that we take it out of the balance of the city council contingency account and, uh, move it into, um, all of those line items in judicial and financial budgets. So it, it'll take about 25,0785 for us to cover those, uh, the additional payroll and the benefits associated with this increase from part-time to full-time. So if you had any questions on the resolution or anything like that, be happy to answer.
Yeah, as a reminder, we did see this in the budget for the next year, so. But go ahead, if you got questions, go ahead and ask.
So this person will be part-time, uh, judicial and then your assistant to help you, correct?
Right, right. So the court clerk position has been half-time for a number of years. And then, um, now, since it's a full-time position, that those extra hours are allocated to my department.
And I, and I want to remind you that this position was filled last year.
In Janu-, yeah, in February she was hired.
Sandy Mashie had been the clerk and she took another position in Jefferson. And we had to hire a new. And at that point in time, we, Betsy and I discussed this and as she said, we, we decided this would be a good position to kind of split. And the council agreed with us and, and at that point in time, we had agreed that at this end of the year, we'd see where it was and how to divide it out.
Yep, I, I remember all that. Does anybody have any questions for Betsy or for Steve on this one? Besides what's already been asked. It is budgeted for the, for the upcoming year and this is just to cover that, that shortfall from the budget for last year.
I'm not, I'm not quite clear, we have a, an employee already?
Yes, yes. This was something that happened in, um, in January and she was hired in February.
And she'll be able to fill both positions?
Right, she's been doing that. Yep. Yes. So it's been full-time since February.
Yeah, so she's been working there, what, eight months, nine months now, at least?
Right.
So the figures will cover her back pay or is this for next year?
What'll happen is the money that we're transferring now is going to cover what we've expended so far this year for her, um, payroll and benefits.
Okay.
This is the budget maneuver, Doug.
Number is. Right.
Yeah.
Wanted to be clear on that.
Good.
Yep. Anybody else have any questions? Hearing none, let's call a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Schmidt.
Aye.
Diane Fritsch.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Aye.
Doug Fritsch.
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Item C, resolution 20 dash 50. Could I get that? Let me make sure it's not crazy. Can I get that title read, please?
Resolution 20 dash five zero, resolution approving the extension of tax increment district number two for Wisconsin Department of Revenue, City of Lake Mills in Jefferson County, Wisconsin.
All right, could I get a motion of adoption for resolution 20 dash 50?
So moved.
Thank you Doug. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you Vicki. Um, I thought I saw Dustin in here. There he is. I think we're going to pass this over to you first, you or Steve.
Okay, thank you. Um, I also have Anna Feltham from, uh, from my company online with us. Uh, she's been working with me on this. So TID two is the industrial park TID, for lack of a better term. Um, it is closing, uh, next year. Um, it has been successful. Um, but one of the things that the state statutes allows us to do is to keep a TID open for one more year for the purpose of using those dollars or, um, workforce housing, um, or affordable housing, uh, opportunities or projects. Um, this resolution, um, if passed, would enable the, um, the city to keep that open and use the dollars collected in 2021, um, to further, uh, workforce housing, um, opportunities or projects. Um, we have heard over a number of years, and Steve can certainly attest to this, from the business community, um, in the industrial park. And just outside of the industrial park, your larger employers, that there is a housing affordability issue in the community. Um, this is a unique opportunity that is enabled by statute to have dollars available, for a single year period, uh, to use for affordable housing or workforce housing initiatives. Um, one of the things that we've also included here is, I'll call it a white paper or policy document for lack of a better term. Um, but it does go into detail about some of the housing, uh, demographics in the community and, um, outlines the hows and whys of why do you, to, um, to, uh, keep the TID open for one more year for these purposes. Uh, and then the expectations for the, by the city, uh, for utilizing these dollars. It's good for, obviously, uh, not just council members, but the general public to understand why, um, why we're doing this. I know, uh, many of you have been plugged in to, um, some of the housing issues that have been, um, problematic, not just in, in Lake Mills, but in Jefferson County. Um, and again, this is just a unique opportunity where you have a TID that's closing that you could keep open for one more year. It is solely at the discretion of the municipality if it wants to do this. So in essence, if you pass this resolution, um, after all the dollars, all the, um, any outstanding debts, et cetera, for the TID are paid, those remaining dollars would be available for, for initiatives. We have outlined, um, a series of things that they could be used for. And I want to make it clear, it is not for use in the TID. It is for use citywide. So, um, it's an important distinction, whereas, you know, we're focused on TID monies being spent in the TID. That is not the case with the, um, housing affordability, um, uh, usage of, of the monies. Uh, there is a list of things that, that it can be used for, everything from property acquisition to construction, development of, uh, uh, infrastructure. Um, a local needs-based grant program, you could use it for development incentives such as, you know, municipal cost, professional services, design, um, et cetera, that's accrued. Um, but the, uh, the, the, I'll say caveat associated with the money is 75% of it has to be used for workforce housing or housing affordability issues. The other 25% can be just used for, um, housing improvement, um, in the, in the municipality. So you have some latitude there. Um, we are going to be talking a little more detail in the coming month about, um, some initiatives, uh, related to this. But the first big step is passage of this resolution, so we can provide that to the department of revenue, so they know that you are going to be doing that. We're also recommending, um, though you're not under obligation to do so, that we provide the white paper and the approved resolution to the joint review board members, which is your taxing jurisdictions. We have discussed this with them in the past. They understand that it's coming. Um, but of course, we should send it to them just so they have it immediately.
Yeah, that was a question I had, whether or not this had to go back to planning commission and joint review board and all that stuff.
No, it does not. It just falls to you.
Well, there, there are features of this that may go back to planning commission.
Oh, yes.
As you, as you remember, um, we've been discussing this for a while and where we could locate some things and how we could develop this and what we would look for. So we were looking at the extension of the TID and using the revolving loan fund that we have to turn back and that we can get back if we use it for appropriate purposes. So the conversations that we as the council have had, uh, Brandon and Dustin and Dwayne have been working with me, uh, to put together a proposal that would fall into this category. Uh, and be consistent with what we've discussed as a council before. So, um, probably in the, well, not probably, in the next 45 days, you'll see a lot of this.
Yes. It is important to note, this is just the approval of using the dollars for these purposes. Still, any expenditure of dollars is going to go through the council.
Right, but it does extend, uh, allow the extension of it for another year.
Correct.
Um, and then I did see in the email from Anna that there was some, and you mentioned it too, um, workforce grants and things like that. So we have to go through this whole process and then we do have the option to apply for grants if we go through the proper process. What will those grants do for us? What would we, what would we be using those for? Why would we ask for those grants?
Well, again, there are certain things that the state is trying to achieve in the, um, as it relates to workforce housing or improving housing opportunity. So those grants could be for, um, infrastructure. They could be leveraging these dollars that are coming out of the TID um, to undertake certain projects. Um, there are programs out there to help with down payments for qualified, um, uh, applicants. Uh, there's a variety of things that you could be using grant dollars for. Um, but this does not fall under that category. This is you deciding which, uh, affordable housing or workforce housing, um, activities you want to earmark those dollars for uh, on a case-by-case basis. So, um, the grants is kind of part, it's kind of hand-in-hand with this, but it is kind of a separate thing. And again, those would come to you individually as, uh, grant applications and generally a resolution to, um, uh, support the, whatever the local match is for those grants.
It also, for, for each program that we go through, Mike, we end up with more requirements. I mean, the, the one for the RLF is, is going to be pretty tedious as it is. Probably won't matter than that, that we're applying for grants, but you just have to go through and make sure that each grant is hitting the categories that we want to fall into.
Yes, and, and these TIF dollars, if you will, can be used to offset your local administrative costs associated with, with undertaking these activities. And then again, everything from shovels in the ground and pipes in the ground and concrete and asphalt to, um, uh, to attracting developers, to, um, activities to reduce the cost of housing, um, to make it, uh, uh, more affordable. So again, there's a litany of things and you're going to see those things coming back to you. That's where the white paper comes in to help, uh, frame how the city expects to use, uh, these monies.
Before Diane, sorry, before Diane asks it, can we, uh, could the possibility of extending CP Avenue be on the board with some of these funds?
I don't want to say it can't be, but again, the dollars are supposed to be earmarked towards, um, housing affordability, right? So I would suggest if you were doing development along it that was for housing, uh, for affordable housing or workforce housing, I would say yes. I would say that if you just want to take monies from this and use it to extend a roadway, I would say no.
Yeah. Okay, I just wanted to get out there because I know Diane always asks. Okay, I just wanted to get it out there because I know Diane always asks that and I wanted to ask it once.
We reviewed that, we reviewed that site for what we were discussing, but there are so many wetland issues that it was less feasible than the other site that we looked at. And so most of, all our proposals are going to come on the one site. So you'll probably see those in the fifth.
Okay. Doug, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Do we have to have all the planning and execution done by the end of, end of next year?
No, you do not. But you'll have a lot of it underway.
Yeah, we're supposed to have most of it done by the, at least the paperwork and stuff done by 2021 for some of the different things.
That'll be next month. You are going to see a litany of things related to keeping the revolving loan fund monies.
Yeah.
But again, when it comes to the expenditure, you have some latitude of using, of timing of using the dollars.
Okay. Any other questions for folks?
No.
All right. Thank you. Let's call the roll call vote, please.
Diane Fritsch.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Aye.
Doug Fritsch.
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt.
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Thank you. Item D, Ordinance twelve twenty-one, first reading. So I think we have to read the full thing.
Ordinance, do you want me to skip the legal description portion? And just like?
Yeah, please. Yes, please.
Ordinance one two two one, amending City of Lake Mills, Ordinance six sixty dash four four, official zoning map, City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin. Parcel identification number two four six zero seven one three, two four two two zero zero five. Formal Development LLC, twelve oh four South Main Street. The City Council of the City of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, does ordain as follows. Section one, City of Lake Mills, Ordinance six sixty dash forty-four, the official zoning ordinance and map of the City of Lake Mills, are hereby amended to zone the following described property from two-family residential, R two eight, and rural development, RD, to multifamily residential with a planned development district overlay, R three twelve with PDD overlay. To wit, parcel identification number, again, is two four six zero seven one three, two four two two zero zero five, twelve oh four South Main Street, Lake Mills, Wisconsin. The legal description follows. Followed by section two, the parcel consists of approximately 1.745 acres and is depicted on the attached map, which is incorporated herein. Section three, all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent with or contravening the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section four, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon passage and publication as provided by law.
All right, thank you. So just a note, this did go through the Plan Commission and it went through a public hearing. And it passed unanimously to change the zoning at the Plan Commission. So now it's on us to change the plan, to vote on whether or not we're going to change the zoning from what it currently is over to the R three twelve with the PDD overlay. Keeping in mind that we just changed the PDD overlay process, so this is a good, a good use of this right away. But do you have any comments, questions, thoughts before I ask the planner?
I would like. Sorry, Diane, you can go. I was going to make a motion to suspend the rules to move this from first reading to third reading.
Okay, we've got a motion to move this to the third reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Doug. Let's go ahead and call the roll call vote on that, please.
Mr. Foster.
Aye.
Doug Fritsch.
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt.
Aye.
Diane Fritsch.
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Okay, before we do the third reading, does anybody want to hear anything from the planner? Yeah, I think so. Go ahead, Mr. Wolf.
Okay, thank, thank you so much. As most of you are aware of this site, this was the property south of what was Topol's before they cleared it and the old Dairy Queen site. It had contractor shops or landscaping shops, et cetera. It's a lot of outdoor activities. It is a challenging property in the sense that it's very narrow, a little over a hundred feet wide, and it's very, very deep. It extends out to the edge of the, part of the golf course. The south edge is the Glacial Drummond Trail. Redevelopment of these types of sites is challenging because there isn't a lot of latitude to group building structures, et cetera. It's very linear. The proposal to rezone it to R three twelve, our multifamily district, enables them to have multiple buildings on there and it enables the density that they're asking for, which is sixteen units on that just under two-acre property. But there are some things that it does need the flexibility that Plan Development District allows for. One of them are some of the minor setback issues. They're a foot or two short on some of the side setbacks to the Drummond Trail. And the use of the R three district has a minimum acreage size. And so again, the Plan Development District allows us to work through some of those issues to enable a better development layout on the site. The buildings, as I mentioned, are three, they're like townhouses. They're three-unit and five-unit building complexes. When you look at the design of them, they do appear based upon kind of the little breaks they have between roof lines and where the main entries are. They do sort of look like single-family homes. These are going to be condominiums, so they will be owner-occupied units. There will be an association that will take care of all of the onsite maintenance, et cetera. There will be green space, a little over forty percent of this, almost forty percent of the site will be green space, which is certainly much more than it is now and is much more than is required by code. There will be ample parking onsite. Every unit will have two garage stalls and then two driveway stalls. So very similar to single-family homes. There are also about a dozen general guest parking sites, stalls, inside of the development as well. So there shouldn't be any parking issues out on Main Street. There were some questions that need to be resolved that came out from the Plan Commission as part of the conditions. One of them is just making sure that a snow removal plan is provided. That's obviously going to be important. And the other was clear understanding how trash or refuse is going to be handled. Are they going to be individual refuse containers? Or is there going to be a container for the entire development? So we need some clarification on that. But those are some pretty, pretty minor issues to address. The, overall, the development does comply with what we're shooting for in redevelopment of this area. We've been planning for nearly a decade, I'm looking at Steve on that, for redevelopment of this area down here. TID number five was put into place to encourage redevelopment down here. This project will extend utilities in and loop them to the south, which is very important. There will be pedestrian access to the Glacial Drummond Trail, which will be very nice. The architecture certainly complies with all of our requirements. I mean, with that, I could answer any specific questions. There is a very generous landscaping plan that will be implemented. So there'll be very attractive units when all is said and done, overlooking the golf course and the Drummond Trail.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Are there any questions anybody would like to ask? Just keep in mind that this is really pertaining to the change of zoning right now. And while you can ask the questions about the planning of the the buildings and stuff like that, that still has to go through its own process before it's ever finalized.
I have a question about whether or not all of the drainage from this development is going to stay on-site or if it's going to go off-site anywhere.
Well, Vicki, all drainage goes off-site somewhere. The question really is, is it any different than it was historically? That should be the question. And I think Dustin alluded to it a little bit, but both the Topol site and twelve oh four were substantially impervious sites. You may not have noticed it, but almost the whole area was either concrete, asphalt or gravel on twelve oh four with buildings. There was a little bit of green area in the back, but not a lot. There's actually with the forty, almost forty percent green space and the stormwater quality requirements that are being built there, they will have less stormwater runoff now than they had prior to this. Same with Topol's. Now, I assume we need a little bit of history in developing this. First of all, the city doesn't have any stormwater codes. They never adopted it. If you remember, I proposed an ordinance to have that done. They wouldn't adopt it, but they let me do it as an administrative rule. So the administrative rule is kind of enforced by me and the councils let that ride. The, if you look at the history of it, if you see redevelopment areas like the Bank of Lake Mills, the BP, several of the other buildings in the downtown are heavily developed areas, you're going to note that we didn't require full stormwater detention. We mainly went with quality requirements. The water was already all running into the creek at a different rate. So we basically cleaned it up and then allowed it to go. In this case, what we had looked at is, is prior to, just after the TID was done and at the time State Highway eighty-nine had started, we got the stormwater plans from the state for eighty-nine. And Dwayne Vanemis noted that all the stormwater in this area was already being dumped into this area, had been since the fifties, but the state was not making any changes to it, even knowing that there were development conditions that had changed. We kind of pressed them a little bit on it and they absolutely refused to change the plans. And I did not get, what should I say, overly excited about it because I figured we could capture that problem with the TID at some point in time, doing a regional stormwater basin, kind of like we did for Walgreens and Ace Hardware, where it runs all the way out to Wetland Park and we have that there behind those condos off of Cherokee Park. And we did it down on Owen Street in those areas. So when, when we were doing the original TID proposal before we had anything from formal or Topol's, we had shown a stormwater detention basin there. And one of the key requirements of it is, of any stormwater detention basin is where is that water going to go once that area fills up? Now, historically, that area has been used as a stormwater detention basin because the state's had pipes running there forever and all the stormwater in the area ran there. So the question really became, where does it go if it gets full? And so we were looking at addressing that by creating a stormwater detention basin, running it along the south end of the basin, down to the bike trail and then out along the bike trail to the east, where it would head out towards CP Avenue. And that would be an important feature of any stormwater detention basin. It does have to be done. I mean, the area's been a stormwater basin for sixty, seventy years already. But it's, it's a, if I were doing it, I would definitely put that basin in there and make sure that water flowed in a direction that was appropriate. But it doesn't impact these two developments. They are producing less stormwater runoff than they historically did.
So this, by approving this tonight, we're not approving a stormwater detention basin anyplace?
No, that would take a totally different set of practices. We'd have to go through and purchase the land from the golf course in some form or fashion and then we'd have to go through our design and those things. But that's, you know, those are the reasons that we don't give a hundred percent of the TID dollars to the developers. We keep generally about fifty percent. The only time we've ever gone much over fifty percent was at Topol's, where we gave them a hundred percent. But usually, we keep a pretty substantial amount of those dollars back so that we can do these types of projects that benefit the whole region.
If you did do a stormwater detention basin in the future, does it have to be on the golf course or could it be on a different property?
Well, we looked at that and there's no way to drain it anywhere else that would get us out of there. And it would take a lot of replumbing work because all the state highway already runs there a lot. Some of Sandy Beach runs there and most of those properties in that area run there. So it's the low area and generally low areas are low areas. And you go to there and then you have to figure out how to get it out. It's like the detention basin on the north side of Pinnacle there. It all runs into that kettle and then it's lifted out of there. Well, this one, we could have drained it to the southeast with the appropriate piping and it would have relieved some of the problems that we saw potential. I mean, it's never actually overflowed. But you know, when we had that kettle on the north side, it was, it never pumped. And then all of a sudden, it started pumping and the reason was is that the capillaries in that kettle started to fill up with material from the roadways. So Dwayne and I, that's what we were looking at immediately when the Highway eighty-nine project came through. To say that these developments had any impact on it, actually, they have a better impact on it than not. It's consistent with what we've done in heavily redeveloped areas.
So it's your opinion that by rezoning this property and allowing it to develop into the sixteen condos, the stormwater that's going to be released on this property to adjacent areas is going to be no different? And or maybe it'll be even be better than what is there currently?
It's better than what was there when we purchased the property.
Okay.
So yes, it would be, it would provide a better option than what's, what had historically been there.
Note that they are showing two biofilters within their site as well as the point that Steve is making, which is the impervious area is being reduced from the pre-development. But the landscaping company that was there, that was, number of buildings, number of gravel areas. I think Dustin had mentioned that that number is going down. But if you look at the site plan that was, is in the packet, there are two bioretention filters there. More for water quality, but it does provide some water quantity holdback as well. There's one between building three and four and then one on the north side of the entrance.
We do have a motion on the table.
Yep.
Do you have any other questions, Vicki?
No, that was my main concern was stormwater drainage.
Yeah, I can, I can tell you that it will be better than it was historically. But you know, that area is dependent on the water soaking into the ground there. And you know that as well as I do, when the runoff off the streets and things starts to flood those capillaries, it changes. And we've been getting a lot more rain than we historically have too. So if those types of things change, that area could flood. I would, if I were making the decision and you allowed me to do it, I'd have that stormwater detention basin in there. But that's not on the agenda today.
Correct.
Okay.
Can we, I got one question. Can we, what do we have to do to re, to advance that problem?
Advance the stormwater problem?
Yeah.
Well, sometime in the next year, I'm going to bring it back to you and we'll see where we want to go. I don't want to hang up either one of these projects with that problem. But it's something that I, I would move forward. that I, I would move forward.
Okay, I'd look forward to that.
I would like to call the question on the?
We did.
Motion on the floor.
We did call it.
We both on that?
Yes, we did. So now we're getting ready to go to the third reading. So, it's been a while, I know. I almost forgot we did it too, but we did.
Sorry.
Okay, uh, Heather, could we get the title right again for the third reading?
Ordinance twelve twenty-one, amending City of Lake Mills ordinance six sixty dash four four, official zoning map, City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin. Parcel identification number two four six zero seven one three, two four two two zero zero five. Formal Development LLC, twelve oh four South Main Street.
All right, thank you. Do we have a motion of adoption for ordinance twelve twenty-one?
As amended.
As, well, there's no amendment, it's just you move to the third reading.
That's true, you're right.
Yeah. So, we'll entertain a motion of adoption.
So moved.
Thank you, Diane. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Doug. So, in motion and second, do we have any more comments or questions before I call the roll call vote?
Uh, I did have a question, give me a thought. I lost, I lost, I gotta think. Um, it had something to do with, no, the, the next thing after this passes, then what's the next step? Do we have, yeah, go ahead.
Dustin's. There's some refinement, yeah, there's some refinement to, um, to some of the plans. Uh, some of the engineering things, uh, that, uh, Dwayne and Brandon and Strand want to change will get addressed, but from there, they'll, they'll be moving forward, they'll go to permitting.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Well, just one last question, what kind of market are they looking for?
Uh, these are very high-end. I think they start at three seventy-five? Looking at Steve on that one, I think they start somewhere around three seventy-five.
They start at about three seventy-five, and they move up from there depending on what amenities you want. Um, they are nicer condos, uh, they have some pretty nice features to them, they're not in some of the categories we want. It's, it's hard to say though, because, um, I don't think most of the houses that are being built nowadays are, are hard to get under three hundred thousand dollars. So, you, when you look at a four hundred thousand dollar condo, you, you get some benefits in, in building condos because, um, there's so many shared items in it that, that the cost savings is there. Uh, but now you're looking at a, an upper-level condo, but, um, three hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars these days doesn't buy much of a home either. Not like when I was a kid.
Anything else, Doug?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Heather, let's call the vote, please.
Doug Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Diane Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Item ten, recommendation for future agendas. Well, this is the last meeting of the year for the City Council. Um, so our next one, we will, I know we had some stuff Dustin said was coming up.
June fifth, or January fifth.
January fifth.
It'd be great if it was June fifth, but it's January fifth.
And our, our next meeting, we should also be, uh, appointing a new council member to take over the, the spot from Mr. Fields.
It will be on the agenda. I don't know that you have to do it, but it's on the agenda.
Yeah, the plan, the plan is to do it if we have the right candidate, I guess. Right. Applications are being accepted until December twenty-eighth for that, for that, uh, replacement.
We also have a privilege in the street that night for, uh, three oh eight Lake Shore. Um, we'll have a developers' agreement, and then we'll talk about the workforce housing project layouts and, uh, see which one we want to submit as part of our proposal for the, um, RLF CBT project. Uh, so, yeah, those are the ones I know of right now.
Okay.
Look forward to that.
All right. Well, that moves us on to item eleven. We are adjourned. Thank you, folks, and if I don't see you before, have a happy holiday and a good new year.
Stay safe.
Yep.
Yeah.
Thanks, everybody.